Good morning. Welcome to Santa Rosa County Board of County Commissioners's regular meeting, Thursday, August 28th. Time is 9:00 a.m. Please take a moment to silence your cell phones, or put them on vibrate, or whatever you do to make them not interrupt us. We're going to invocation this morning is by Pastor Shane Tucker from the Journey Church. If you would, please press the right-hand button and you'll make the red light come on.
Dear God, we thank you for this county that we live in, which is such a wonderful county, but it's not as good as it could be. So, Lord, we come to you with thanks, but we also come to you with prayers and ask that you make this a better county. We recognize there are riches and there's poverty here in this county. It's not as bad as it could be, but, Lord, we ask that you would pour out more abundance on this county. We thank you for these commissioners and for the staff that surrounds us. We pray your blessings on them. We pray for wisdom. Lord, these five men right here, they are good men, but they would readily admit that they could be better men. So, Lord, we pray that you would make them better men today than they were yesterday, and tomorrow better than they are today. And, God, I pray that you would continue to improve this county. God, we thank you for the privilege of living in this county. We thank you for the privilege of, I thank you for the freedom to come here and the blessing that they have offered me, just to pray over them. And, God, I pray for them to have wisdom, and while they might not always agree, I pray that they would always be agreeable. And, God, because of this blessing that you give us in this county, in this county commission, I pray, Almighty God, our heavenly Father, that you would send down upon these who hold office in this county, the spirit of wisdom, spirit of charity and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people in this county. And through Jesus Christ, our Lord, we pray. Amen.
Commissioner Williamson, you lead some pledges, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Sir, next is approval of minutes of July 24, 2014, regular special meetings. You've seen those. Blessers and objection. I recommend approval. Here none. They are approved. Approval of the agenda. We'll start on my right. Commissioner Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no additional items.
Mr. Salter.
No additions, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have an additional item that's up to the chair where he'd like to place it. Either I recommend either 2A or in budget, but I'd like to work, have our staff work with the clerk's staff on giving, providing a sheet to the, could go to our island leaseholders, that explains thoroughly and perhaps gives some examples on how lease fees are affected when you pay your taxes. I just let it up to your discretion where you think we ought to put that.
Well, let's go ahead and associate it with item number one, and we'll call item 1, 1A, and then 1B, the request for the clerk to disseminate information. Commissioner Williamson, please. Commissioner Lentner.
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you very much. First on the agenda is Economic Development Committee. Commissioner Salter.
Mr. Chairman, you want to check with staff?
For the record. Mr. Walker.
Yeah, it's just a note that the, already on the agenda, or both of them in the budget and finance, we had a budget amendment, which is number nine regarding $70,000 that had been, District 4 funds that had been established for the Turtle Conservation Center. If you recall, this, these funds had been taken from the TDC allocation as opposed to the, so we're truing that up in total. And then the number two on the budget and financial management is the bid for the replacement of three half-ton pickup trucks in the building inspection department from the capital fund. And that's just a bid. It was a low bidder meeting specification.
Okay. Mr. Andrews.
No additions.
Ms. Bell.
Tony.
Avis.
Okay. Economic Development Committee. Commissioner Salter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have one item with two recommendations. Recommend acquisition of conservation easement on the following two parcels adjacent to N S Whiting Field, and an ongoing base buffering program funded by Florida Defense Initiative grant and the U.S. Navy REPI funds. And those two parcels are 20-acre partial owned by Ray and Sarah Riley with an appraised value of $26,000. Next one is 41.78 acre partial owned by Mark Reinhardt with an appraised value of $104,000. Here again, this will be paid from the base buffering initiative funds and REPI willing sellers. So, at this time, I would move approval without objection.
Here none passes.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next is Administrative Committee.
Can you ask a question about the next one?
Yes, ma'am. Name and address for the record.
Sandra Cantu, 9577 Highway 90 East in Milton. Why is there such a difference in the cost per acre on these two plots?
One of them's twice the size. One of them is a 20-acre parcel, and one of them's a 42-acre parcel. And I assume the difference would be what was on the property. The appraisal was done by the Navy.
And is the price per acre the same as what we paid for that last bid last week?
No, no. This is on agricultural property. Those acre, per acre prices are fairly close. The, we hire, or the Navy hires an appraisal for each of the parcels. It's done by MAI Appraiser. It depends on the location of the parcel and the improvements, if any, on it. The property that was acquired at the last meeting was industrial property, so it had a different price per acre than agricultural.
And did the same person check the prices of each of the pieces of property?
The appraiser for all three of these parcels was Brantley and Associates, which is an appraisal firm.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just additional information. Anytime the Navy does appraisals, or we do appraisals, it has to go through Whiting Field first, and Whiting Field sends it to Jacksonville to their Southeast Command. Their real estate department scrutinizes it really, really, really careful to make sure it's correct and it's in compliance with all the Navy policies. So, it gets looked at by several different people. Thank you.
All right, sir. Administrative Committee. Item number 1A is recommend resolution committing funding of local portion of our beach, Birm and Dune Renewalment. We went over this Monday. Mr. Walker, if you would, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. In your packet is the resolution that Mr. Andrews had developed, just committing the full amount of the non-state share, as we had discussed in some detail Monday.
All right, sir. Open up the discussion before the board before I, okay. I recommend approval without objection. Here none passes. Item 1B is request that the clerk disseminate information for the leaseholders on the beach. You want to restate that, Commissioner Cole, for the record?
Yes. Board made provisions probably 10, 12 years ago that taxes paid on the beach would be, would offset the lease. And I don't apologize about not having that exact language here, but I believe it was done through a resolution. And a couple of things I'd like to do. I'd like to make sure that this has been being applied through the clerk's office. And then I think something we should do, because we've been getting a lot of requests and discussion about, you know, making it a dollar lease. But until Fee Simple Title comes along, or we get a solution for that, I want to make sure the leaseholders all are familiar with this resolution. And so, I think it wouldn't hurt us to provide an example sheet, and this, the explanation in itself and its entirety, and also an example sheet to go out with the tax bill. We've already missed a trim notice, but that way these folks that feel like they're paying a lease and a tax would see how we've already worked to offset some of that.
You know, y'all had asked at the committee meeting, directed, and asked, you directed staff to come back, I believe, in first meeting in September, kind of on the lease fee issues, and that was certainly going to be a key, was going to be the policy that was established in 2011, and how it's been, how it's been implemented. And we need to make sure that that's, that's exactly the way the board wants to do it. And then any discussion on the lease fee. So, I think if we could, could do what you, we need to do what you say, but I believe it needs to be after that meeting, and the board makes a determination kind of on where it is with these things. Instead of, I would hate to do a, send them one, something the next week, and then it change in potentially two weeks.
And I didn't expect that this could get done immediately, but I thought I'd at least get it out to the board, get it out to you, and get it out to the clerk's office that where we could, I don't know about you, but wanting to start reading all that legal jargon, an example would be a whole lot easier for me to follow.
I get you. And we can do that, but, yeah, that's what y'all had directed at the, at the next meeting. And I apologize. I thought you meant something sooner.
Thank you.
So, do we need to take direct action on this now, or are we just teeing this up for?
Yeah, it's coming back, and I think.
But I know, but it's already coming back to us, so we don't need.
No, I'd just like to share that with the board and the staff.
Okay. Next is item number two, which is recommend a joint letter with the Escambia County Board of County Commissioners to Congressman Miller and Senators Nelson and Rubio regarding federal legislation allowing Fee Simple Title on Santa Rosa Island. I guess this is probably Mr. Andrews' ball.
The, the joint letter would, would deal with some proposed amendments to the bill that was introduced by Congressman Miller. The letter that has been drafted would deal with the three amendments. One amendment being the establishment that the conservation recreational land definition in the Escambia County ordinance would remain the same. The second being that there would be no excavation of a pass and other excavations and other limitations on wetland issues. And the third being that there could be a donation of a conservation or recreation easement to the Park Service if that was proposed. The joint letter agrees or indicates that we do not have any objections to Amendments 1 and 3, but says that we do object to Amendment 2, and Escambia County has indicated through their staff that they join in that objection to Amendment 2. And so, we give the Senator Nelson, Senator Rubio, and the Congress the input from Santa Rosa County as to what we feel like in regard to those proposed amendments. The amendment's being proposed by the National Park Service, I think.
All right. Thank you very much for that explanation. I recommend approval without objection.
Mr. Chairman, discussion on that, please.
Sure.
Roy, I'm trying to follow along, but so basically Escambia County is opposed to Amendment 2 also?
Escambia County is opposed to Amendment 2, particularly on the basis that they don't want to tell the Santa Rosa County Commission what the Santa Rosa County Commission should do.
Okay. Have we had feedback from Public Lands or anybody like that? I mean, I, Fee Simple Title's important to these folks, and I.
Excuse me. I don't know that I got the question.
Well, okay. I guess the draft is going to go in as written? Or are we going to take Amendment 2 out of it, is I guess what I'm asking.
Well, we're objecting to Amendment 2. That's what the draft says. We object to the amendment, if that's the direction of the board.
Okay. All right. Any other?
Did you get your question answered?
Yes.
All right. I recommend approval without objection. Here none passes. Item number three is discussion of a request from Northwest Florida Marine Education and Discovery Gulf Ecosystems Incorporated for actions associated with location of the Reef Cam on Pavilion Number 2, Navar Beach. We don't have those folks present, but they did bring us the requested cost numbers. Oh, there you are. Okay. Please, be ready for your presentation. Name and address for the record, please.
Mike Tombrowski, MRD Associates.
Mike, you have to press that right-hand button. There you go. If you have a red light, you got a hot mic. You see it? Nope. You just turned the light off.
Am I there now?
Yeah, you see that light right there? Just make sure that stays on.
Thank you, sir.
There you go.
Mike Tombrowski, MRD Associates, 543 Harbor Boulevard, Destin, Florida. The last time that we were before you, which was Monday, you had asked about having a cost estimate of the three options that we were looking at, which I prepared a memo and forwarded to the county. I believe that you do have it in your package. There were the three options. One was the original pile-supported system, which was roughly about $93,000. Then we had the two options of having a power cord from the offshore camera to the pavilion, and there was two methods of installing that wire. The first was to jack and board it underneath from the camera to the upwind. That came out to be roughly about $150,000. And then the third option, which we originally proposed, was to install a self-burying cable. So, basically, it's got a heavy steel cable or galvanized cable to it that would work its way into the ground so that it would not be exposed. And that was roughly about $73,000, $74,000. So, there is a cost savings of approximately $20,000 from what was originally proposed with the pile-supported system. And so, we would be pursuing option number three.
Questions from the board. Commissioner Lentner.
Mike, with, if the camera's hot-wired, is hardwired in versus the solar panels and the pile-supported system?
Yes, sir.
Does it give you more options on what you, how you can outfit the camera? Lighting, pan, and tilt, that kind of thing? Or is it all the same?
As long as that we have enough wire within that cable, which we do have extra, that we can add on to it, like we were been talking about underwater lights. We've also been talking about incorporating possibly a wave gauge to it and tying that into the webcam. So, it does give us a number of options of expanding that system.
Okay. And that's, so I think that's a plus in and of itself. I mean, that's justification for going with the hardwired system.
Yes. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mike, what's the expected life expectancy of a cable like this? I know a hurricane or anything like that, but if, in just natural environmental conditions of saltwater in this cable?
Yes. And that's the nice thing about a self-burying cable, that it is, works its way underneath, and of course, that you do consider a certain amount of corrosion. We've had them up in the east coast of Florida up to six years. And I believe that they say that you could get 10 years plus out of those.
Okay. So, you have six-year examples that have not yet failed?
Excuse me, sir.
You've had, you got six-year on the clock now, but they still haven't failed, or?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. Good. That's what I wanted to hear.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Mike. We appreciate it.
Thank you for your attention.
I recommend approval without objection. Here none passes. Item number four is recommend waiver of permitting fees for the construction of residence for disabled veteran by Holmes Fire Troops Incorporated at 8656 Tupelo Drive in Navar. Details are in the backup. We discussed this Monday. Unless there's anything else from the board or somebody from the public, I recommend approval without objection. Here none passes. Item number five is recommend scheduling the following public meetings regarding proposed judicial facility. 6:00 p.m. Monday, the 15th, at the Pace Community Center. 6:00 p.m. Tuesday, the 23rd of September, the Milton Library Meeting Room. 6:00 p.m. Tuesday, September the 30th, at the J Community Center. 6:00 p.m. Tuesday, October the 7th, at the Navar Visitor Center. 6:00 p.m. Tuesday, October the 20th, at Tiger Point Community Center. 9:00 a.m. Tuesday, September the 30th, at the Tiger Point Community Center. And 8:30 on Wednesday, October the 8th, here in the boardroom. I recommend approval without objection. Here none passes. Item number six is recommend amendment, amendment number one to the Florida Coalition Against Domestic Violence Contract for the Domestic Violence Grant Program, and authorize execution of the relevant documents. And I do so without objection. Here none passes. Item number seven is recommend community off-site clinic agreement with Walgreen Company to provide annual flu shots for employees at several locations at no cost to Santa Rosa County. I recommend approval without objection. Here none passes. Item number eight is recommend fiscal year 2014-15 Florida Division of Library and Information Services state aid to the library's agreement for library operations and authorize the execution of the relevant documents. Move approval without objection. Here none passes. Item number nine is recommend annual designation of surplus property for disposal by clerk of courts. We discussed this Monday. I recommend approval without objection. Here none passes. Item number 10 is recommend the fourth annual science spooktacular by the sea event hosted by the Navar Beach Science, Navar Beach Marine Science Station in the Navar Beach Marine Park, October 24th, 25th, 2014. I recommend approval without objection. Here none passes. Item number 11 is recommend license agreement with the property owner at 2635 Venetian Way for flood repairs caused by the April 30th flooding. We discussed this Monday. Unless there's anything to add to the discussion, I recommend approval without objection. Here none passes. The meetings, nonetheless otherwise noted, they're all held in the boardroom here at Santa Rosa County Administrative Center. They're posted on the website. Those of you without internet or those that are here that would like a copy, we'll provide you a copy after the meeting. I recommend approval without objection. Here none passes. That concludes the Administrative Committee. Engineers' report. Mr. Blaylock.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Item number one is we're recommending initiating the process to amend the Chapter 4 of the Land Development Code, updating the Florida Building Code revisions, the FDOT specification revisions, and complying with current ADA requirements.
Questions from the board? Anybody in the public? I recommend approval without objection. Here none passes.
Item number two, we're recommending advertising our request for proposals, which is on the street for our solid waste collection service north of Yellow River, including the amendment to the vehicle weight for small haulers from 10,000 gross vehicle weight to 15,000 gross vehicle weight, and the start date for this contract, January 1, 2015.
We discussed this on Monday. I recommend approval without objection. Here none passes.
That concludes Engineers' report.
Public Services Committee. Commissioner Lentner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is recommend the following recommendations from staff and project volunteers on construction of restroom facilities at Navar Park. Locate the facility at the western end of the property outside of the flood zone at an estimated cost of $100,000. Thirty-foot by 50-foot restroom using treated material, hardy board exterior, interior tile walls, metal roof, concrete epoxy flooring, metal touchless fixtures, heating and air conditioning. Volunteer group will provide design services, contractor and labor for the project as available. County will provide site plan, building grade, utility connections and specifications, and other assistance as required. County will also purchase materials that are not donated, led by building maintenance pursuant to procurement ordinance, and close the westernmost pavilion during construction for safety and security. for safety and security. Unless there are any questions, I will move approval without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
Item two is recommend appointment of Anna Weaver to the ship Affordable Housing Advisory Committee as recommended by that committee, and I do so without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
Item three, recommend submittal of annual reports as prepared to the Florida Housing Finance and authorization of execution of the certification forms by the chairman and county administrator, and I do so without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
Item four, recommend supporting Navar Community Access Road feasibility study as proposed by the Florida Department of Transportation, requiring local 50% match of $250,000, and I do so without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
And that concludes Public Services.
Public Works Committee, Commissioner Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Public Works Committee has no items today.
Budget and Finance, Commissioner Cole.
Thank you. Item number one under Budget and Finance is recommend scheduling... recommend schedule of pricing from Santa Rosa Fence &amp; More LLC for the annual chain link fence contract, the sole bidder meeting specifications. I do so without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
Two, recommend bidding the amount of $17,299 each for three one-half-ton trucks for Building Inspection Department at an aggregated cost of $51,897 as low bidder meeting specification. I do so without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
Item three, recommend budget amendment 2014-164 in the amount of $36,804, correcting funds erroneously charged to the TDC for the Navar Beach Sea Turtle Conservation Center building from District Four reserves. Do so without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
Item four, recommend budget amendment 2014-165 in the amount of $10,500 to transfer funds from the capital fund for purchase of large scanner-copier as approved by the August 14, 2014 meeting. Do so without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
Item five, budget amendment 2014-166 in the amount of 50... or $578,760, carrying forward prior year program income and interest, and program income and interest reallocating strategy balances in the ship program fund. Do so without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
Item six is recommend budget amendment 2014-167 in the amount of $600 for the power supply to irrigate... for irrigation of Phase Two, Highway 98, medium beautification project from District Five Project Fund. Do so without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
Item seven is recommend budget amendment 2014-168 in the amount of $48,085, carrying forward funds for the purchase of a self-propelled broom in Road and Bridge Fund as approved at the August 14, 2014 meeting. Do so without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
Item eight, recommend budget amendment 2014-169 in the amount of $280,000, recognizing LWCF grant funds in the District Two Recreation Fund in the amount of $200,000, and additional TDC reserves in the amount of $80,000 as approved at... by TDC at the June 23, 2014. I do so without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
Item nine, recommend budget amendment 2014-170 in the amount of $70,000 establishing Sea Turtle Conservation Center construction amount from District Four funds. Do so without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
Item 10, recommend county expenditure and check register, which I've signed through and provided for your approval. Do so without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
Chairman, that concludes this report.
All right. Thank you. County Administrator?
No, sir.
County Attorney?
No, sir.
Public Forum? Anybody have anything to bring before the board?
Sandra Canto, 9577 Highway 90 East, Milton. I'm not sure how to present the information that I have or the questions that I have. It has to do with the educational process you were talking about for the public, for the courthouse. I have a number of questions that I would like to see addressed at the educational process, but how do I do that?
Right here, just if you have them, and if you don't, if you don't already have them, you can...
I'm sorry?
Do you have them with you now?
Yes, I have a... I have a list of the questions.
Okay. Chairman? Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Sandra, what I'd suggest, we have our website, and we've got our public information officer.
Mm-hmm.
That we could get those... See which ones possibly are already on the website as far as our Q and A there, and if they're already there, then we wouldn't be repeating them, and if they're not there, they could certainly be added.
I don't have internet.
Well, I understand that.
If you give Joy right after the meeting.
If you give them... See the lady in the back right-hand corner with the long dark hair?
Back here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That's our public information officer. If you would present that list to her, she'll make sure that they're incorporated. If they aren't already there, then it should be the lady to work with.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you for your question. Anything else to come before the board? Here, none, seeing none, we are adjourned.